We call to order the meeting of Belbrook City Council, January 13th, 2020. If you could please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Pam, before we call the roll, I want to mention that tonight, we've got a couple of new people on board. We went through the election process and Elaine retained her seat. And I'd also like to welcome Ernie Havens and Tim Taylor at the end, our newest council members. We were sworn in, Ernie and I were sworn in by Judge Mike Murray on December the 27th. And Elaine and Tim were sworn in by me on December the 31st. Our council ordinance is required that the new council members be sworn in in advance of January the 1st. So we did it 27th to 31st. Also like to make a comment about Mike Murray. Judge Murray has just recently retired from Xenia Municipal Court. But he swore a number of people in, he swore me in a number of times, and he's something he really enjoyed doing. And I wish him a very happy retirement, and that's partially why we had to move ahead the swearing. And he had to swear at his successor, I think, on December the 30th, and his last day was December 31st. So congratulations, Mike Murray, and welcome to council. With that, Pam, if you could please call the roll.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Mr. Havens.
Here.
Dr. Van Veldheisen.
Here.
Mr. Greenwood.
Here.
Mr. Edwards.
Here.
Mrs. Mittelstetter.
Here.
Mayor Schaller.
Here.
This time for approval of the executive session and regular meeting minutes of December the 9th, our last meeting. Any member of council have any changes?
None.
No mayor.
Seeing none, I will recommend that the minutes be approved as submitted. The next item of our agenda is the appointment of deputy mayor per section 4.05 of the city charter. The deputy mayor before was Daryl McGill, who was not reelected. So one of the first sources of businesses to elect a deputy mayor for a two-year term. Pam, do you want to fill us in on the process?
All right, so the process for this is that a member of council can make a motion to nominate any other member of council to be the deputy mayor. And then, once we have any, all nominations that have been announced, then we will give each nominated member a chance to speak about why they would like to be the deputy mayor. And then, we will call for a vote by show of hands. Then I will tally the votes, and we will pronounce a winner at that point.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, the floor is open for nominations for deputy mayor.
I'd like to nominate Nick Edwards.
Okay, Nick Edwards, thank you. Anyone else, please?
Can yourself nominate?
I'm not in charge, but I think you probably could.
It doesn't say that you can't, so you're a member of council.
I nominate myself.
Any more nominations, otherwise I'll close the nominations. This time, I'll ask both Nick and Forrest to stand up and give a statement, or I guess be seated to give a statement with regards to their plans as deputy mayor. You go ahead and go first, you're nominated first.
I appreciate the nomination. I've been involved in Belbrook City government for 24 years. I've held leadership positions on the planning board, the charter review commission. I've got outside experience in leadership through my involvement as board chair of the United Way. Belbrook is my home, it has been my home, it will continue to be my home, and I would be honored to serve as deputy mayor.
Thank you, Nick. Forrest?
I'm nominating myself to serve as deputy mayor of Belbrook. I'm qualified to serve as deputy mayor because of my leadership positions while serving in the military and the US Civil Service, as well as my six years serving on Belbrook City Council. As deputy mayor, I would be able to stand up and make a seamless transition as mayor while maintaining our citizens' confidence in our city. My qualities are loyalty, integrity, sound judgment, and a lot of heart. The mayor serves as a focal point during meetings and ensures all council members have the opportunity to bring forth ideas that result in the best overall decisions. I feel all council members are qualified as well to serve as deputy mayor. I appreciate them standing up for this position. In closing, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and my fellow council members for considering me for this position. Thank you very much.
Does anyone on council have questions of the two nominations? That being the case, I think this time we call for a vote. Pam, go ahead. But let's just do it by show of hands.
Okay. So, show of hands for choosing Mr. Nick Edwards as deputy mayor? And, thank you. Show of hands for Mr. Forrest Greenwood. All right, thank you very much.
Congratulations, Nick. You're the new deputy mayor, and I think we're in a mood to receive around one of these days, so.
For the next meeting.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
And thank you, Forrest, too, for both of you being nominated.
Congratulations, Nick. I couldn't let you do that little competition.
Thanks, Forrest, thanks, Nick. Okay, next, we have the mayor's announcements and special guests. We have the oath of office for Sergeant Tony Better. I think before that, we had the chief who wants to give some comments. Do you have three minutes or five minutes?
It shouldn't take. Well, thank you, council, for having us here today. In the world of the police, this is a monumental occasion for us, one that is sacred. So if I could have Tony Better join me up here, please? And if you could introduce the people here, family and friends?
All righty. I'd like to thank my wife, Brenda, and my children, Elizabeth and Anthony, for coming. My parents, Lynette Skip, my uncle Brian, brother Jeff, Mr. and Mrs. Wilson, my fellow officers, as well as Mr. and Mrs. Bretcher, and Mr. and Mrs. Mead, and Carson. Thank you.
Just stay right here. So, a little bit about Tony. He was first hired in 1997 as a part-time dispatcher. 1998, became a full-time dispatcher. 1999, he became a police auxiliary and a full-time dispatcher. And on the momentous occasion in 2001, Tony became a full-time police officer for the city of Belbrook. He worked in that capacity until 2016 and became our detective. And he served valiantly in that position. And having been a police officer myself for 30 years, I haven't seen anybody take to it quite like I saw Tony take to that job assignment and responsibility. So it was really fun for me to observe and be part of. So, thank you, Tony, good job with that. Brenda, could you come up here, please? Just a little bit.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, John Anthony Better.
Aye, John Anthony Better.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio.
Constitution of the state of Ohio.
That I will obey the laws thereof.
That I will obey the laws thereof.
And I will.
And I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Uphold and enforce.
Uphold and enforce.
The provisions of the charter.
The provisions of the charter.
And the ordinances of the city of Belbrook.
And the ordinances of the city of Belbrook.
And will faithfully discharge.
Will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
For which I am about to enter.
For which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
We're out of pens, I'll get on here. You sign right above mine a little bit. Good, well, thanks. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now the fun part.
All right, yes. So, thank you, Mayor. So at this time, I'm going to have Brenda pin Tony Better, his sergeant badge, onto his work uniform. Just a quick word from me. Very proud to have Tony as our sergeant. We are a better department with him in this leadership position than we were just a few months ago. So, Tony, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Don't have anything prepared. I did also want to thank my mother and father-in-law for coming as well. I'm sorry, I forgot them. But it's, I just realized that. Thanks to everybody for coming out. I'm excited to enter this new position and look forward to continuing to serve the city that I grew up in. Been a part of Belbrook since 1978, and it's a dream come true to serve as a police sergeant here. Thank you for everybody for coming, and city manager, mayor, and council, thank you. Look forward to the opportunity.
Thanks, and congratulations. At this time, if anyone wants to leave the meeting, we will not be offended. We understand. We've seen this happen before. But thanks for attending tonight. Next, we have a proclamation from the city of Beaver Creek. Whereas the Memorial Day tornado hit Beaver Creek on Monday, May 27th, 2019, approximately 11:18 PM, leaving a path of massive destruction and loss, whereas Belbrook came to our aid, giving tirelessly of your time, energy, and effort to assist us with the damage recovery, and whereas neighbors helping neighbors spanned beyond the borders of Beaver Creek with contributions from cities, villages, townships, park districts, counties, and the state, and whereas Belbrook generously provided staff and equipment to help the Beaver Creek residents begin to recover from the devastation left by the tornado, and now therefore I, Bob Stone, mayor of the city of Belbrook, Ohio, along with city council and our entire community, wish to thank Belbrook and express our sincere appreciation for your assistance as our city continues the process of healing and rebuilding. Your presence and generosity in our times of need was uplifting to Beaver Creek and will never be forgotten. And witness where I have her into, set my hand and caused the city seal to be affixed this 25th day of November, 2019. Signed, Bob Stone, mayor, city of Beaver Creek. Ryan's in the audience. Ryan, do you want to come and talk at all? Have any comments, or?
Do you want it to thread? I will.
And I certainly would like to have you share this proclamation with your employees.
Absolutely.
Just bring it back, the city won't post it.
No. When all this happened, Melissa and I discussed what we could do to help, and we both decided mutually that we, it was during the summertime, we didn't really have the manpower, but we made the manpower. And we would have liked to help them out more than what we did, but, you know, we still had, we still had to think, things to do on our end. But it was, it was truly an honor, and, you know, we didn't want recognition, but he stopped by last month, and the service director did, and it was, it was real nice what he did for us. So, it, like I say, neighbors helping neighbors, and if we needed the help, they would be there for us, so.
Well, thanks a lot for the effort, it was much appreciated. You guys had some fun doing it, and the neighbors took good care of you, brought your water and gatorade in. Good deal.
Every one of, every one of the guys wanted to do it, and they did, so.
Good, thanks.
Yep.
You got challenge points, too, and I've got it for council members here. I'm going to pass down four, and I've got one for, for Daryl and Donna. Ryan, thanks so much, appreciate you speaking.
And just so everybody knows, we did not ask for any reimbursement, and so our efforts were donated towards their share of the cost for cleanup, for their FEMA share, so.
Good answer. Okay, next item of public hearing ordinances, we have none. Introduction ordinances, we have none. We do have two resolutions. First resolution, resolution 2020-a, Deputy Mayor Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 2020-a, the resolution authorizing the city manager slash finance director to file with the Greene County Auditor, request for advances of taxes collected. Whereas Greene County Treasurers in the process of collecting property taxes for 2020, whereas tax settlements will return to the city those taxes collected for the police, fire, and general fund, and police pension funds, and whereas these settlements will not be ready in final form until after a significant amount of the taxes are collected. And whereas such advances of the tax, of taxes provided, provide the city with a percentage of taxes already collected, which can be expected, which then can be expended by the city. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolves, section one, that the city manager slash finance director is hereby authorized to request advances of taxes in amounts authorized by the Greene County Auditor for those times during 2020 when sufficient taxes have been collected. Section two, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith. This is something that we do every year to be able to operate our city on prospective tax dollars and that kind of stuff.
So without this resolution, we would only get tax settlements twice a year. So this gives us multiple receivables throughout the year, which is good.
Helps the cash flow.
Yes, a lot.
Any additional discussion on council?
This is typical, do we do this every year?
And may I ask, do you do it at your discretion, Melissa? I mean, when you, when you need money, do you do it three times?
They just give them, they give us the money as they collect it, so.
After passing this?
Yes, yes. Without, we may get 10 payments in a year versus just getting the two, so.
Are there collections on a regular schedule?
They're monthly, for the most part. I think we get them monthly up until about October, so.
Any more discussion?
Do you know if we're the only entity asking for this?
I'm not sure. I, I'm pretty sure with some of the larger entities, it's probably pretty common.
Yeah. It's a lot of cash moving back and forth, if you can accelerate the funds. You know, it's money we're allowed to leverage, too, so. Just didn't want to be a special case, you know.
Well, I guess if I may, it strikes me as kind of a tribal knowledge type of thing, that since we have the ability to do this, you do it. It gives you more income coming in, and I assume makes us have, the end result is we have to do less moving around of money in the budget that we just approved, because you've got the money coming in to pay the people from that.
And without an income tax, income tax would be coming in in a monthly basis with other communities. So I would imagine Beaver Creek would operate in the exact same way in order to keep continuous cash flow coming in versus twice a year, without an income tax, that makes it really hard to float.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? We have a motion for resolution 2020-a.
I'll make a motion to introduce resolution number 2020-20-a.
Thank you, and a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
A motion was made by Mr. Edwards to adopt resolution 2020-a, a resolution authorizing the city manager slash finance director to file with the Greene County Auditor, request for advances of taxes collected, so seconded by Dr. Van Veldheisen. Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Dr. Van Veldheisen?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Havens?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mayor Schaller?
Yes, thank you.
Next, resolution 2020-b, Mrs. Mittelstetter.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 2019-b, a resolution authorizing Michael W. Schaller, mayor of the city of Belbrook, to enter into an amended employment agreement with Melissa J. Dodd, city manager, finance director. Whereas the city of, council of the city of Belbrook and Melissa J. Dodd desire to amend their written employment agreement, and whereas it is required that the council of the city of Belbrook, pursuant to Article 6, Section 6.01 of the Belbrook Charter, shall appoint a city manager by a majority vote of its members and fix his or her compensation. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolves, section one, Michael W. Schaller as mayor of the city of Belbrook, is hereby authorized to execute an amended employment agreement attached hereto with Melissa J. Dodd on behalf of the city of Belbrook. Section two, that Melissa J. Dodd be afforded a cost of living increase in the amount of 2 and 3/4%. Section three, that Melissa J. Dodd is granted a bonus in the amount of 7% of her annual salary as permitted in the amended employment agreement. Section three, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
This again reflects council's annual review of Melissa Dodd, our city manager. We conducted that review on December the 9th, knowing that we had two council members that were not going to be returning, so we wanted to make sure that the existing council that was here for the majority of the 2019 year was able to participate in the review process. And I can speak for certainly council, we're very happy with what Melissa's done. We appreciate the job, and keep up the good work. Any other members on council that can add to that, or?
Just support it. 100%.
Any further discussion? That being the case, we have a motion for resolution 2020-b.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2019-b.
Did you say 19 or 20?
2019.
It says 19 on there, it should be 20 as a typo.
2020.
We'll catch that one.
I wondered about that.
The new year.
I was reading, I wasn't thinking.
It's right at the top.
We'll change that.
In the corner, yeah. We can, we can change that.
We have a second, please.
Second.
Thank you.
Is that Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you, sorry. A motion was made by Mrs. Mittelstetter to adopt resolution 2020-b, a resolution authorizing Michael W. Schaller, mayor of the city of Belbrook, to enter into an amended employment agreement with Melissa J. Dodd, city manager slash finance director, this was seconded by Mr. Taylor. Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Havens?
Yes.
Dr. Van Veldheisen?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor Schaller?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have the city manager report.
Okay, so, the holidays happened, so that just by design kind of slows a few things down, and just allows us time to be able to get caught up in the office and get some, some things finished that sometimes we just don't have a lot of time to do. So, um, one of the things that I wanted to bring up is wellfield protection. We've got a meeting on the 22nd to discuss creating a wellfield protection plan with the service director and two representatives from the Ohio EPA. And so, we, we have some documentation that exists, but not a formal wellfield protection plan. And there's just been recent discussions that have just sparked that importance of creation of that document. So we're just going to talk to the EPA about how we would go about creating it, what, what would be included in that. They have some templates that are online and things like that, so it may be something that we're able to do on our own as a staff. It may be something that we want to take an extra step and have the EPA assist us with. I'm not really sure what that's going to look like, but we're just going to have some preliminary conversations just to see what, what the steps to get a formal plan adopted would be and created. So, that's, that's one of the big things. One of the, one of the other things I would like to bring to the council's attention that has been brought to my attention in recent months is the Parks District has no representation for the city of Belbrook that is currently on their three-member commission. And when it was set up, the Parks District was set up, it was originally just Sugar Creek. And when the Parks District approached the city of Belbrook, who operated their own Parks, Parks Department, I believe, is what it was titled, I'm not 100% sure on the, the complete naming of that, but we did operate our own, operate and maintain our own parks. So they had approached the city and said, would you like to combine? We will, you know, fold into one, Belbrook-Sugar Creek, you'll always have representation. And in their bylaws, it was set that there would be one member of Sugar Creek, one member of the commission would be Sugar Creek Township resident, and one would be a Belbrook resident, and then the third would be one way or the other. And for approximately the last seven or eight years or so, there hasn't been any representation from Belbrook at all. It's, it's all been represented by township residents. So, they do have a term that's expiring this year, and the way that those individuals are put in place with the Parks District Commission is that a name is submitted to a judge, and the judge basically makes the determination as to who is going to fill that seat. So, what I would like for council to at least consider is possibly soliciting any interest from citizens of Belbrook, and going about it kind of like how we do with our boards, and maybe putting a name forward if somebody steps forward that would be, that we would be interested in having considered for that seat that is going to be open. So I believe that that would be open in May, and we would need to put a name forward beginning of February or so.
Would we advertise it and then look at multiple potential candidates, and then maybe interview them ourselves? And make, do we make a recommendation to the?
To the judge.
To the judge, is that how?
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea.
Follow the same format we do for other boards in the community.
Any idea why we haven't had that representation?
From what I understand, is that somebody had moved, and then the bylaws changed so that that requirement for a city resident went away.
Is there a term on?
There are terms, and I'm not, I'm not sure if it's like a staggered term, like a four-year, two-year. I, I would need to look into that, but if council would be interested in pursuing this, then Pam and I can get all the details to be able to put it out.
I think it's a good, we need to have a representation.
If they'd like to do it, yeah. And I think Community Affairs is probably the proper place for it, too, to do it. Go through the every process and do as you see fit on that. We've always gotten a name and a nomination. We've seen who's been nominated. I don't think we ever paid much attention to why it wasn't a city person, or what the rules actually set as far as who the board should be consist of or comprised of, so, good catch.
Would there be recommendations, any kind of qualifications, or interests, or something?
I think diversifying is always a good thing, personally.
What is it?
Diversifying.
I'd like to see us advertise, and just like we normally do for board openings, to see who comes forward, and you go from there and find out, and we can get some information and help in the meeting, and the terms and some of those things, they don't have to get themselves into.
Strong interest, like they do for the zoning and planning.
Noting that.
Let's not forget the museum.
Our selection wouldn't necessarily be what the judge would decide, it would just be an input.
Right, correct.
And I'm not sure how the names were put forward in the past, but I think that if the city as a body decided on a person that they would like to be considered, that that would probably have some pretty strong weight.
I would hope so.
So, for clarity, for the last seven, eight years, Belbrook's not had representative because no names were put forward from the city, and so they just accepted the names that were put forward from the township?
I don't believe that the township has even put forward names. I believe it came from the Parks as an organization. I'm not 100% certain on that, but that's, that's what I had been told, is that that's how that's typically operated.
Do they have anything like a charter?
They do, they have bylaws.
Is that something we can get a copy of?
I'm trying to get a copy.
Start with that.
Yeah, yeah. I have an old copy.
Okay.
But not the one that's changed, yeah.
You know, right, wrong, or different, we weren't aware of it, to be honest with you. Until you brought up the issue a couple of months ago, we started talking about it. I was not aware that we had the option to select somebody. It's great to have one of our citizens on the board. We do have parks in the city that are managed by the combined board, so it makes sense.
And funded by tax dollars.
Correct, yeah.
We will work on it then. We will work on it then.
Okay.
Thanks, Melissa.
That's it, just wellfield and, and that.
Any questions of the city manager? Thank you, Melissa, let's move on. Next is the, we're going to do the committee assignments first or the committee reports? If that's the case, I'll turn it over to you momentarily.
Let's do the assignments first. So, um, since we have new council members, each of the council members are part of some of the council committees. There are four council committees. There's finance and audit, safety, community affairs, and service. And they act as the liaison between council and the city staff, the city departments. So since we have some openings to that, there was a chance to, to kind of change things around. There's also some chair decisions that need to be made. So, um, from finance and audit, the, the two members that were on the committee previously would like to remain. That's Mr. Edwards is the chair and Dr. Van Veldheisen. And, um, are we taking nominations for the other?
We certainly can.
Okay. So if someone has a nomination for the third member to the finance and audit committee?
And I think self-nominations are fine as well. And the way it works out is everyone's going to be on two different committees. And that would get pretty good balance.
Yeah, so.
I'll nominate Ernie Havens for finance and audit.
There we go, okay, so.
Any other nominations, finance and audit? Do we have a vote?
Should we just do them all, could we do all the nominations and then do one vote? Does that make sense?
That's fine, yeah.
Okay, we can do that. So the next would be the safety committee.
I'll go ahead and nominate Tim Taylor for safety.
All right. Community affairs?
I'll nominate Tim Taylor.
Nope, actually, can we switch that? We're going to switch that up, just so everybody has two assignments.
Or just?
That would give Tim three if we.
Sorry.
Yeah, sorry. I know it's.
I said that wrong, I'd like to nominate Ernie Havens.
There you go. All right, and the service department?
I'll nominate Tim Taylor.
All right, fantastic. All right, so for those nominations to those different committees, show our hands, all in favor? Anyone opposed? None opposed, so.
So Ernie's on finance and audit, Tim is on safety, Ernie's on community affairs and Tim is on service.
Do we need to put the chair as on safety?
Yeah, that's our other question. Who would like to be the chair between, we have Mr. Greenwood, Mrs. Mittelstetter and Mr. Taylor. I do have to say, we already, Mrs. Mittelstetter is already the chair of community affairs and Mr. Greenwood is the chair of service.
I nominate Tim Taylor.
There you go.
Okay, very good. So Tim Taylor becomes chair of the safety committee. Thank you. Okay. Now, do we want to go through the regional agencies as well or?
I think there's just appointments.
There are appointments.
That volunteers.
Yeah.
Everyone has before you, the, the list is regional agencies, so just let Pam know which ones you would like to be a member of or serve on.
So just saying, there are several agencies in the area, I'll list them out. There's the Bellbrook Sugar Creek Chamber of Commerce, the Green County Regional Planning Commission, the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission, the Historical Museum Board of Trustees and the Firefighters Dependency Fund. And there are always members of council that act as the delegates and alternates to those and attend meetings and bring back information for the rest of council.
Okay. Community assignments, now we're up to committee reports. Safe or service, please. Mr. Greenwood.
I'm, I'm saying, oh, you mean?
Well.
I said, safe service.
Service, Donna's not here, so.
Well, now you're, you're the new chair, so.
Easy. You've only been on the job for like ninety seconds.
Okay, safety, Mr. Tim Taylor. Nothing to report today, Mr. Mayor. Okay, thank you. Any others on safety, have any report from a prior event or anything or something before then?
I was just going to say, we've got new staff on the police department and I've had some citizens contact me and they really appreciate the work that they do and the, they take a lot of care and they are very friendly and accommodating. And that's from all the new persons. And like I say, I've had several people just come up and express their like of what's going on, so.
Very good.
I appreciate that.
Good, thanks.
That's all we got.
Finance and audit?
Nothing tonight here.
Community affairs?
We have a couple of things. Opening on the Zone Board of Zoning Appeals Property Review Commission. Tonight is the official announcement, the openings are on the website. We have one person rolling off for, due to term limits. So we would accept applications for that. We also have one opening on the Village Review Board. So both of those are posted on the website, so, and those are up for thirty days?
Yes. And the, the application is also online, so if anyone's interested in applying, you can grab an application.
And I'd say if anyone has applied for other boards previously and they want to just indicate an interest, they don't have to fill out a no, a full new application.
They should just.
Just let us know.
Let us know.
Because we have, we've collected a number of applications within the past few months.
With the Village Review Board though, by ordinance, we're supposed to have a business owner represented. And we don't currently.
Okay, so we need a business owner.
They don't have to live in Bellbrook, but they have to own a business in the old village.
Okay, so that's the, that's the slot that's open. Okay.
They don't, they don't have to own a property either, I don't think.
No, as long as they.
Have a business.
Own and operate a business in the old village, then yes.
Okay.
Are we under any obligation or have we historically contacted people that have applied for board positions in the past and have not gotten them? Can we call them and say, hey, there's a spot opening? Because they may not be watching.
I usually send an email out to everyone who has applied previously, who, who expressed an interest in being. So if I still have your application, I will be contacting you.
Okay, good. That's all I have tonight.
Okay, thank you. Item twelve is council liaison, assignments for regional agencies and cities boards. I think I jumped the.
Yeah, we kind of.
So we'll cut over through that one? Okay. Any old business?
Boards and commissions, that part wasn't talked about, was it?
Oh, okay, I guess we can. I didn't, yeah, we.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Okay. So besides liaisons to the city departments and then regional agencies, we are going to, starting this year, also have a liaison position for each of our boards and commissions. And this is someone, they will, council member will be the contact person between the boards and council. They won't have voting rights at the meetings, they won't speak at the meetings unless there's a question to be answered. But it's someone who will stay abreast of what's happening at our different boards and ta, you know, take any questions that council might have to the boards on, on items that are being discussed. So, um, these will just be appointments that we're doing. And so do we want to do the appointments now?
I might point out though that I have been the appointment to the Historical Museum Board and that has been in place for as long as I remember.
Right.
So that's not new.
That's not, no, that's the only one that's not new.
Okay.
Yeah. For some reason, we just didn't have that with the other boards. But we're gonna, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
I was going to say, have I been illegal all this?
No, no, we just.
We're ahead of the game. I'm ahead of the game.
So it was good because you would bring news to council that was going on with, with the museum boards. So, so we are just implementing the same thing across with the other boards. So the other boards are the Board of Zoning Appeals and Property Review Commission. There are two names, but it's one group that meets. And the liaisons are going to be Mr. Edwards and Mr. Havens. Planning Board is going to be Dr. Van Veldheisen, who was previously on the planning board. So he's very current on a lot of the things that they are discussing in that group. And Mr. Taylor is joining as a liaison there with the, the Historical Museum. Mrs. Mittelstetter is still going to be there, but also Dr. Van Veldheisen has a good background in, in historical, what's the word I'm looking for?
Preservation.
Preservation, that's the word.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. And then the Village Review Board is going to be Mr. Greenwood and Mr. Havens. I think it's because we have an uneven number. It works out that way. All right, and that's all of them.
Okay, thanks. Now, old business. Does anyone have any new business? Open discussion of council. Start with Mr. Taylor.
Well, he's already left, but I wanted to congratulate, congratulate Sergeant Tony Vedder, thank him for his service. And also thanks to Ryan and his group for what they accomplished on behalf of the city in Beaver Creek. And then I'd also like to thank, once, once again, the citizens of our community for their vote and their trust. And I'm looking forward to having a positive effect on the council and within our community.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Councilman Havens?
I'd like to start by really thanking Melissa for all of her efforts and very glad to see the outgoing council review and the information associated and presented to us. I think you've done a great job and look forward to working with you as a council member. Appreciate all the residents and their confidence in me to be a city council member and look forward to making you proud over the next four years. And definitely congratulations to Tony and a sincere thank you to Ryan.
Thank you, Ernie. Councilman Van Veldheisen?
Just again, a thank you to Melissa for all your work last year and in general to the council, city. A happy new year, looking forward to the challenges this year.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Greenwood?
I'd like to welcome Councilman Ernie Havens and Councilman Tim Taylor. I know you worked hard to get here. Really look forward to working with you. I think we can, we've got everything in place, I think we can accomplish some great things this year. And I appreciate the Sergeant Tony Vedder, he's, he's really worked hard. He deserved, and he also worked very hard to get that position. And that's all I got.
Thank you.
Nick? I'll echo the comments of the other councilmen concerning Melissa, Tony worked at the park, the city service department doing Beaver Creek, but I do have one question, I probably should have asked it during the city manager report. We typically have a couple of meetings a year with Shure Creek Township and I think last time it was even with the Board of Education. Are those meetings scheduled, are we going to be doing that again?
I don't think that we put anything on the schedule after the last one.
Because the last one we had at the middle school, I don't know, I don't know, how would we take turns in doing it?
Yeah, we would host next. Well, we, the Parks District is involved too, so I'll, I'll reach out.
Those meetings are productive and I think it gets along, I, I think a lot of our citizens expect us and want us to work collaboratively with the other areas around us and that is one way to.
It's a good reminder. I'll reach out to the group.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Nick.
I think along those same lines, I think maybe you could check with city staff if there's anything that we can help collaborate with the other agencies, you know, with Shure Creek and schools, I mean.
Okay, good, thanks. Elaine?
Well, I will echo those, thanks to Melissa for the great job she did last year. Welcome Tony and, and Tim and Ernie. Thank the voters for re-electing me for my third term. I obviously enjoy this, or I wouldn't have put myself out there. And I'm looking forward to the challenges and what we can achieve for Bellbrook in the next four years.
Thank you. I too want to thank the voters, I think it's a real honor to service Mayor of Bellbrook. I've been a resident of Bellbrook since nineteen eighty-four, so this is something that's been my blood for a long time. I've been involved in city government since nineteen eighty-six, so I've been involved from a very early age and this is kind of something I wanted to do, kind of the capstone of my career of the city, not that I'm leaving anytime soon, but I, I wanted to be mayor at some point in time, so I appreciate it and will thank the voters for that. Secondly, welcome to Ernie and Tim officially, it's nice to have you on board. I think we've got some new energy coming on and I look forward to your contribution. And then finally, with regards to Sergeant Tony Vedder, please give a word of thanks to our police chief. That is so nice that we're promoting people from within instead of looking outside. I think that's a real good statement to make about our department, so.
I'd like to add one thing, if I may. I forgot that this week, I think it was Thursday, was Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. But became aware of it very, very late, so it just, I think that thanks and appreciation to them is appreciated anytime, not just the official day. So, thanks guys and ladies.
This now brings us to open discussion. Anyone from the audience, feel free to come forward, you have three minutes. We ask you to state your name and address.
Hello, congratulations, Tim and Ernie, you're welcome, thank you. My name's Steve Kircher, thirty-six ninety-five West Franklin Street, Magnetic Springs Ranch, Bellbrook, Ohio. I'm here with my wife, Carrie. We're here representing Bellbrook Mountain and wish to take this opportunity to address the city council on its behalf. As most citizens of Bellbrook and all of you are aware, we have made a previous request to the city council for the use of a portion of unused vacant land in the city of Bellbrook Wellfield area off of Waynesville Road for parking so that we can open Bellbrook Mountain Snow Tubing Park to the public. I understand you are discussing our proposal further and request that you especially consider the following. The city land we are discussing is a portion of the wellfield which lies adjacent to and directly east of our Magnetic Springs Ranch property. It is primarily located in the flood plain. It is encumbered with five contaminated observation wells which were abandoned by the city and now require capping and filling to meet the requirements of the Ohio EPA. These open wells are a current and ongoing risk to our city's water supply. In addition, this land is also encumbered with a large meander in the Little Sugar Creek requiring bank stabilization soon to avoid further erosion of the land at another considerable expense. This land has more liabilities than its financial value. This land is at its best a current financial liability to the city and an ongoing risk to its water supply. We have offered to buy or lease this land and assume the liability of properly capping and filling these wells per all EPA requirements and would also apply for permitting in the future to stabilize the meander in the Little Sugar Creek. In return for this encumbered land, the city would receive a multimillion-dollar outdoor recreation facility delivered at its doorstep with no real expense or risk to the citizens of Bellbrook. This park will preserve precious open space and attract visitors from Columbus, Cincinnati, Dayton and all surrounding Ohio communities and bring pride and joy to the citizens of Bellbrook for years. Bellbrook for years to come. In closing, we have received overwhelming and ongoing public support for Bellbrook Mountain and we thank everyone who shares our vision of bringing an amazing outdoor recreation park to the citizens of Bellbrook. Please help us to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. I will make the comment that we had an upcoming election, I wanted to make sure the election was done and then find out we got the new guys on board before we deal with this. I think we're going to talk about this at our next meeting, the 26th or something like that.
Executive session, yes.
So, we haven't forgotten about you, we just pushed it back a little bit, knowing that we may have some changes in council with the election, so.
I understand that, I appreciate it. I'm here anytime you need to call me, contact me. I think you all have my contact information. I'm more than willing to meet with anybody anytime and show you the property and discuss it further at any time.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
May I have a good question?
Go ahead.
Steve, you said, I believe you made an offer to cap and fill the wells according to EPA at your own expense?
Yes.
Is that, and fix the meander, is that whether it's purchased or leased?
Yes, because to open, I think we'd, we'd have to have those wells capped and filled. We met with the EPA and that was kind of what was directed to be done. As far as the meander goes, the way it's progressing, if you look back on satellite photos or photos from about 30 or 40 years ago, you can see how drastically that meander has eroded that land. It's probably taken away about 30 feet. If we lose another 30 or 40 feet over the next 30 years, that will encroach on some of the snow, the runout for the snow tubing hill. So, it wouldn't be an initial primary problem, but further down the line, I think it's no question that that meander will continue to get bigger and continue to erode that land to where it would be unusable. So, we would have to, for our own interest, fix and stabilize the bank of the Little Sugar Creek. And there, there is a process to go through. The EPA laid out the permitting process and the contacts to do that. It is in an area which qualifies for stabilization of a meander, so we did, we did have that defined by the EPA.
Nice job.
Thanks. Any other questions or anything?
No, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else could participate, the open discussion aspect of tonight's meeting? Going once, going twice, going three times? Does any member of council have any other business to come before this meeting of the city council? Seeing none, I declare this meeting adjourned.